Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 25th, 2021 zoning board of adjustments meeting. Our next meeting will be September 29th, 2021, 7 o'clock, same time here. Who would like to lead us in the pledge? Patrick?
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Rodney, if you could, please read in the preamble.
Good evening to those in attendance and watching at home. For the benefit of those who have not previously attended a zoning board hearing, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. However, the chair may change the order at their discretion. The board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, abutters, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to given, excuse me, will be asked to give an overview of their petition and read through their responses with the criteria applicable to their case, allowing for the board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances establish the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant approval to a petition, and it is the petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met each criterion. Following their presentation, the chair will open the floor for public comment, either in favor of or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner and the public. However, discussion will not be allowed to devolve into back and forth arguments. All comments made shall be directed toward the chair. Should a question be asked, the chair will pose the question to the petitioner. Afterward, the chair will close the public hearing and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition. Please, at this time, silence all mobile devices. Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney. I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome Charles Mauer. Welcome to the zoning board.
Thank you very much.
And I actually would like to take one agenda item out of order to bring up, specifically agenda item number five, Keith Pascal, petitioner and KTK Realty Trust LLC. For this particular petition, it was brought to our attention that there is pending litigation on this property, and for this reason, it is a decision of the, we will see if it will be the decision of the board to continue this until a time when there is no longer an active lawsuit on the property. So with that, I ask the board to make a motion on this particular agenda item.
Also move.
Aye, aye, second.
Can you be more clear on what you're moving, please?
That we will not take this up tonight.
And it's staff's recommendation that it'll be continued indefinitely with a butter re-notification.
Correct.
Second.
Do we know what the litigation is?
No, it's not, it's not relevant to this. Yeah. So with that being said, motion made to continue indefinitely, agenda item number five.
With a butter notification.
With a butter notification. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? All right. 5-0-0, that item will be continued indefinitely. So now, moving back to the normal agenda, we have number three, Bilden Properties LLC, petitioner-owner, appeal of administrative decision determining that the current use of the property is a junkyard per town zone ordinance and NHRSA 236-112 parcels located at 719 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 general commercial, R4 residential, and planned residential districts tax map 7E Lot 52, case ZBA 2021-07. And before we get started, I do need to swear everyone in that will be speaking tonight. So if anyone out there is looking to speak on behalf of a case, I ask that you please raise your right hand. And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And if you guys would like to introduce yourselves and sign in?
My name is Dennis Stevens. I'm the owner of Bilden Properties.
Okay. And are your microphones lit up? They should be a very bright green.
No, they are.
Perfect, thank you.
My name is Dennis Stevens. I'm the owner of Bilden Properties, and I operate the business next door, Stevens Marquis Associates.
Okay.
I'm Frank Nesmer. I'm an attorney from Manchester of Nesmer and Delo, representing Bilden.
Okay. And if you'd like to go ahead and tell us a little bit why you're looking to appeal the administrative decision?
Thanks very much. We're here to talk about Bilden's tenant next door to Stevens Marquis, which is Donald Belial and his business Catco Recycling. His business gathers recycled and refurbished parts, mostly catalytic converters and alternators and brake pads, things that are known as cores. He gets them from local vendors like car dealers, and till he has enough inventory compiled to ship them economically to regional distributors. Mr. Belial has been in the core parts business for 25 years, not at this location, but previously at another location in Nashua, excuse me, in Merrimack, and previous in Salem. This enterprise is contained indoors. It doesn't involve stripping cars and/or any of the regular accoutrements of a regular junkyard the way we usually think of them. That's why we're here. We'd like it a lot if you agreed with us that this is not a junkyard, but we understand that the definition in the town ordinance is very broad. As we understand it, somebody told the planning board that Mr. Belial was operating a junkyard, and the planning board investigated and determined that he was operating a junkyard. They sent Mr. Belial and Bilden, the landlord, some violation letters. Mr. Belial and Mr. Stevens of Bilden tried to explain to the planning board why Mr. Belial was not operating a junkyard, but those explanations...
Are you talking about the planning board or the planning development office?
Well, they've, they've been working with the planning board up to now.
No?
And the development office, I think.
I'm on the planning board. This hasn't come before the planning board. I think you're talking about community development office.
I could be confused. It's probably the development office.
Thank you.
And those explanations serve to confirm, in the eyes of the people who had cited the violations, only to confirm that Mr. Belial's operating a junkyard because used car parts equals junk. That seems to mean that any car dealer or auto parts store that sells refurb parts would be a junkyard. Mr. Belial is not a parts store. He doesn't have any customers coming and going. There's nobody coming there to buy anything in the parking lot. We understand and appreciate the concern for regulating junkyards. We are in favor of environmental protection. We reviewed the Department of Environmental Services regulations and their best practices manual. I have that here. Not sure if this board is familiar with it. I wanted to offer this copy so you could look at it, if I could bring it up.
Unfortunately, we cannot accept materials during the presentation, but I definitely appreciate you bringing it.
This is available online.
Okay.
It says what you should and shouldn't do in a junkyard, and most of the time, we're talking about lots of fluids and stacks of wrecked cars. And Merrimack would be acquainted with this because there are auto salvage yards in town. But this doesn't look like that because it's a building that has storage sheds outside. They are shipping containers that hold the boxes that hold the cores. And then when the, there is enough cores, they can load them on a box truck and take them to a dealer. So Mr. Belial is kind of like a middleman. We think not a junkyard. Mr. Belial is prepared to certify that he is operating under best practices according to this manual. Our concern here today is balance, and we want to balance the interest of the town in environmental protection against the interest of the town in supporting clean enterprise that is operating properly within the bounds of compliance. We like to address and meet all of the requirements of the development office and of this board, but we don't want to overdo it because when you're talking junkyards, you're talking piles and stacks of regulations such as monitoring wells and wall fence or hedge, and a bunch of requirements for junkyards that don't apply here. We don't have need for monitoring wells or big wall to hide ugly heaps of wrecked cars because we don't have any. And we're hoping that Bilden wouldn't have to produce a $20,000 site plan to accommodate this tenant. Because we're looking at a relatively quiet and clean inventory distribution business that barely fits the definition of junkyard by a few words in the ordinance that can be strictly interpreted. So, storage of used car parts makes you a junkyard. Our first request is to find that we're not a junkyard, but if the board feels as though the definition is broad enough that we fit within it, then we would apply for the permit. That permit application requires a site plan. What we would hope to do, if we had to do it, would be a very basic site plan that doesn't cost a million dollars and have all the bells and whistles that maybe a very sophisticated kind of site plan needs to have because we're just a building. If we need to, we would apply for a variance if that's needed for a junkyard. We think we are an ordinary commercial business that is selling inventory, which is basically wholesale refurbished parts, cores. And whatever is the case, we're hoping to work with the town, the development office, and this board in the way that's balanced, reasonable, fair, and mutually satisfactory to the town and the property owner. We hope we can work together. Thank you.
Has the, has the community development office spoken to you about going down the path of a variance for this?
Well, that's what the development office said we needed to do. We hope to avoid it because it's more paperwork, effort, and expense than we hoped would be needed because we are a distribution business. But if the board agreed with the development office that we are a junkyard, then we would do what we need to do.
The reason why I ask is my concern is not with the community development office's determination as to whether or not the property is considered a junkyard, but more the precedence it would set if we appealed this, which would be far greater than your property. It actually would impact how the board, or how the community development office handles junkyards, period, because of the way the ordinances are written. So, the reason why I ask about the variance is because in the past, it's, it's one of those things where we tend to tread very lightly when it comes to appeals, particularly because there is a downstream impact to appealing an administrative decision. Because, again, like I said, it doesn't just affect your property, it affects any property now that gets labeled a junkyard by the community development office because of an ordinance that may or may not be worded properly. And so, from an opinion standpoint, I would agree. I don't see how that would relate to a junkyard, per se, but I also didn't write the ordinances. So it's kind of one of those things where there's a ramification if we, if we appeal it, which is why I ask about the variance.
Rich, can I add a comment, please?
Yes.
So, when staff originally sent out a violation letter, staff did mention that a variance would be required to allow a junkyard in this, on this property. In retrospect, and I think there is an updated letter that negates that, we now believe that as long as all of the activity takes place in the commercial portion of the lot, a variance is not necessary. This is a split zoned lot, so the rear of the lot is residentially zoned. If the activity were to be in that portion of the lot, then a variance would be necessary. So as long as it's in the correct portion of the lot, we do not believe a variance is necessary for this use on the property. However, the site plan would be necessary, and the town council licensing would be necessary.
But see the...
So that was just an error in our original letter. We do have an updated letter that clarifies that, dated August 18th.
So what you're saying is that if the storage containers are kept on a specific part of the property, it is no longer deemed a junkyard?
And what part of the property is...
Oh, no, it's still, staff's opinion is that this is a junkyard use. We don't believe that if it's in the commercial portion of the property that it needs a variance because Section 5 in our ordinance does list a junkyard as an allowable use in commercial and industrial zones.
But where's the line on the property?
If you look, I don't know if your packets show the, most of the property is zoned commercial. It's the rear portion that has a residential area. I don't know if your packets have, I don't think so. Yeah, so that blue line is the, if you look at the printout of the GIS screenshot in your packets, the blue line is the property line, and it's just the very back rear portion. There's no line here, but that's, the very back of the lot is where it's residentially zoned.
Is that back building part of the residential area?
Right up against the blue line, I believe so.
No, I'm talking about the one with the white roof.
Oh, no, that, that's, as far as I know, that's in the commercial zone, based on our GIS, which is not perfectly accurate. So when they go to the planning board, they would have to prove that all the activity is in the commercial area. I just wanted to clarify that our original letter stated that a variance was required, which that was a little misleading.
I'm a little bit confused here.
It doesn't make sense. I mean, I understand, I understand how the part, the back part of it would be zoned residential. I could, I get that because there, I believe we're, I can understand that, but not knowing where that line is, I mean, to be honest with you, I'd advise, my advice would be to go for the variance anyway, just because, you know, if there's some sort of imaginary line, cross over it, now you're in violation, you know, otherwise...
Well, we know, we will know where the line is. If they go before the planning board with a site plan, they will need an engineer to draw up the property with the zone.
Well, what you're saying is they, they don't need to appeal to do that, they just need the site plan.
They're appealing staff's determination that this is a junkyard use. That is what they are appealing.
Okay. That's...
That's, they're appealing that interpretation.
So I have a question. So, so I'm looking at the site here, and I know that the front part of the house, it used to be a landscaping place, and there's a building in the back. So they pull the cars in there, and that's where they take out the catalytic converter and all of that, right?
Actually, no. That building is where they sometimes reconfigure parts, and they get the parts from car dealers and other places like that and compile them. They do that with that back building as their main headquarters to do it in. The parts are then...
So the parts are refurbished back there?
Yes.
Okay.
They're, they're, they're just cores. They're collected.
The cores, of course.
I wanted to get back, if I could, to your point about the precedent because part of the concern here is this application of the definition as the staff has interpreted it, which is broad but strict. And the ordinance is not exactly lined up with the state statute. If this was under the state statute, it probably wouldn't be deemed a junkyard. But the ordinance is broader than that. And so, if the board was to agree with the staff, then they would be establishing the precedent that anybody that stores used car parts or refurbished parts would be considered a junkyard and theoretically have to get a permit and possibly a zoning variance. What we're looking at is something where the board would have the opportunity to say, if you're a broker and middleman for used refurb and recycled parts, then, and you don't have all that junkyard stuff that junkyards have, then you're not actually a junkyard.
I guess, my next question then is, is what the town is seeing as a junkyard due to the fact that they're stored in shipping containers and not inside of a structure or a building, rather?
The shipping containers are kind of like buildings. They have solid floors and, and...
They are, but in terms of zoning, they're not.
Yeah.
Okay. So that, if these were stored in like a warehouse, a permanent facility, that would be different?
No, we did not take that into account with the interpretation.
So even if they stored the parts inside of a building, it would still be classified as a junkyard?
Yep. It's all about the use taking place on the property, not whether or not it's an internal or external use.
Okay. So it's because these are salvaged parts rather than ready-to-sell parts?
Right. And it's the storage component of them being auto parts that were dismantled from a vehicle. And to us, we think that fits in with the state statute as well, not just the ordinance.
I'm trying to follow all this. We go back to your original point of if we reverse the appeal or accept the appeal...
We appeal the decision.
We are then allowing people, not just the petitioners, to then follow their path and store auto parts on their property. Whereas I think what I heard in the beginning that they were suggesting a variance that would be focused on what you're requesting and not giving a broad path to anybody in town because...
I think there's more concern than just that because, so, so in my notes, if we were to grant the appeal and overturn the community development decision, we would essentially be overturning a state statute or a definition from the state that we are not legally capable of overturning. So it means that we kind of, if I'm correct, we would have to consult with our council as to what to do next if we were to appeal this, just because of the fact that this is not just a Merrimack thing. So then the question comes, do we, and this is something that I'd like to note, do we even have the right to appeal it? I feel like this is one of those things that we should have had a more consultation with our, our legal over. I don't know.
Right, because we're essentially stepping outside of Merrimack. If we were to grant this appeal, we're dealing with a state statute, not a Merrimack.
Correct, because the definition of junkyard that we're dealing with is actually not from our ordinances. It's, well, it is, but it's also from the state statute. So, that's, that's, I think, where we run into an issue with this particular appeal.
Right. And I think a couple of months ago, we ran across something similar, and we had suggested that, that people come back with a variance.
Yeah.
So we could deal with that petitioner individually and not open up a broad acceptance, and in this case, an acceptance across the state, not just Merrimack.
Absolutely. That's why, that's the other reason why I asked about the variance. A lot of times when people come in to appeal these decisions, they'll bring a variance with them just in case. That way, they don't have to show up to another meeting in the event that we do not grant the appeal. So I guess with that being said, is there, are there any more questions from the board regarding this appeal?
Can I throw out one more thing concerning the state statute, which does define junkyard as a place where they're stored or deposited in a quantity equal to a, in bulk, to two or more motor vehicles? And we think the state statute definition is narrower than the town ordinance definition, which is broader. So we wouldn't necessarily be overruling the state statute, and you wouldn't necessarily be overruling the town ordinance either. It would be just a matter of trying to be more specific about what it means because it's so broad that it includes everybody that has used car parts.
I don't think it's our position to, in a, in a hearing like this, to override our town department nor to challenge the state law. And so I don't think it's appropriate that we move forward with this tonight, particularly where we could be setting a precedent.
If the board were to determine that it didn't want to overrule the staff, then what we would ask is that in staff requirements be limited and reasonable and consistent with what we're actually doing, rather than imposing all of the weight of regulations that apply to junkyards. Because we're not actually creating any... Because we're not actually creating any risk or threat to the town that a junkyard would.
Right, but we can't overrule an appeal and then put it in there just for this people. Do you see what I'm saying? If we, if we overrule an appeal, it's, it's black or white, it's everybody. It's not, like, we can't say, it's just, we're overruling the appeal for this particular case, in this particular circumstance. It's, it's, it's a little more, it's a little more absolute than that, and it kind of, then, that's what it kind of puts us in, is that situation that, you know, we do for one, we could do for everybody. So, I, I understand, I think I understand what you're saying, but we, we couldn't put in staff recommendations or staff, you know, just for this particular instance, or just for this particular plot, or this particular situation.
Can we narrow the appeal request? I mean, we're, we're, we have dry storage of several components, and there's maybe only five components that are important to us, okay? Alternators, catalytic converters, flywheels, exhaust systems.
Right, but we, again, we can't put in there to say, you know, we, we can't over, we can't put in there, we can't put in a requirement like that, it's... We can't make a staff recommendation for something that's specific in this particular case, because it's, it's not, because we're, we're not looking at, we're looking at the overall, just the overall what it is that it's being appealed, as far as, you know, classification of a junkyard. That's what we're looking at, we're not looking at specifically whether you're doing carburetors, or you're doing fenders, or tires, or rims, it doesn't make a difference. We're looking at junkyard. It doesn't matter if it's catalytic converter from a tractor or from a car. They just, we're looking at that, that whole appeal, so, so if I'm trying to understand what you're, if I understand what you're saying, we can't say, okay, we are going to overturn the appeal for this, 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 and this.
Well, I'm confused, because we're not asking to be classified as a junkyard, to overturn the staff's decision. We're, we're saying that we are not conducting the activities of a junkyard. We have, you know, the, and in the definition, it says automobile parts, and we have automobile parts.
Right.
So it's parts that will be reused junk, and I think the classification of a junkyard, for instance, Majestic across the street, is, is, is this night and day from the reality of Majestic and what we are doing, focused on going out and selecting particular parts that are valuable, that every maintenance bay and anybody involved in the automotive industry that works on cars is taking these parts and setting them aside to be picked up maybe once a week by people like Catco, okay, to bring back, consolidate, and then take to the manufacturer for refurbishment, okay? And put back into the, the supply stream. So there's a big difference in specifically identifying key components, going after them, bringing them in, sorting them, putting them in containers, waiting till you have enough to haul to the manufacturer for refurbishment, then establishing a junkyard that is open to the public to come in and buy and sell pieces of junk, okay? We're operating a specific business, and we're not, we're not operating a junkyard that has such a broad category to it.
The argument you just made, it'd be, be, that, that would be exactly what you would want to say for a variance, to, to be able to, 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 to be able to operate in that, in that situation, and that, but I, I understand what you're saying.
We're not looking for a variance.
I know, I know you're not looking for a variance. What I'm simply saying is that, you're right, the term junkyard is a broad term. I mean, call it recycle, you know, you know, junkyard, recycling center, hold on one second. Junkyard, recycling center, salvage yard, however you want to put it. When you're, when you're looking, when you're asking us to overturn an appeal, we have to look at it from a very broad, we can't look at it from a very specific. I understand exactly what you're saying, okay? You're not, you're night and day from what's across the street, I get it. But we have to look at it from an appeal, we, we have to look at it, we have to look at it from a broad spectrum and not specifics.
Well, say you denied the appeal. Say you denied, and you didn't want to overrule the staff who's calling this a junkyard.
Well, it wouldn't be the staff calling it junkyard, it'd be them interpreting the definition. Let's, let's just make sure we're being crystal clear about that, please.
Interpreting the definition consistent with that which is characterized as evaluation. And I wonder if, when doing that, you could include instructions that say, we want this to be balanced and managed in a reasonable way, consistent with the interest of the town, and not necessarily consistent with all the regulations that apply to a junkyard.
Rich, I can speak to that, if I may?
Okay.
So, at the site plan process, that would more be a planning board function in terms of what site plan regulations apply. If certain regs do not apply, a waiver can be requested. In terms of what's specifically in the zoning ordinance, if there's a requirement there, then they can return for a variance request. And I don't mean the use, because we do think the use is allowed in the commercial section, and that does not require a variance, but if they believe that another portion of the ordinance does not apply, then they can apply for a variance with the zoning board.
Okay.
But any, but if it's in the site plan regulations in terms of details in the site plan, that is a planning board function.
Understood, and I think to kind of piggyback on what Patrick was saying earlier, the reason why he brought up the whole, you know, variance versus appeal, and why, you know, we talk about it a lot is, variances are good when you feel like the strict adherence to the ordinance is not fair to your business or your person. Whereas that's not what appealing an administrative decision is, it's very different. Appealing administrative decision is saying that the office got it wrong, and that the writing, it means something very different than it does, which means when we do the appeal process, we're telling the office to interpret differently. And in this particular case, it may be something as simple as the definition of a junkyard, or appealing, it could mean how we proceed moving forward with junkyards in general. Unfortunately, you know, without a, without a legal counsel with us right here to talk about this, we don't know necessarily what the end result is. Just that what you're asking for is very different with an appeal than with a variance. With a variance, you're saying, you know, every, and like Patrick said, everything you guys have said tonight is absolutely perfect for a variance, because you're right, in the strict adherence of the ordinance, it is unfair to the business. And that is something that we would look at in a variance, but that's not really what an appeal is. And that's, I think, where we're a little bit concerned. So I, I guess, before we get too far, I still have to open the public, so, oh, sorry, continue.
Just a last comment.
Yeah.
The, I was hoping that the ZBA could identify the intent of the ordinance, and help clarify and define the ordinance for the staff. And things change, you know, whoever's writing this at, at the, at this town level is probably copying most of the, the state ordinance and modifying it. But what was the intent there, probably to regulate somebody like Majestic and large businesses versus somebody is all of a sudden handling automobile parts, and now classified junkyard, and all of a sudden has to adhere to all these stringent requirements, which we all agree to? And if you're not able to distinguish between the small operator and the large junkyard operators, then what happens to the guy who has a service bay, and he has a legitimate service business to operate on vehicles, and he's placing parts out back in the bin for Catco to operate? He is now a junkyard, okay? And he's just trying to recycle parts, save the economy, and save, save the environment. So every business in Meramec that is pulling parts out of vehicles and setting them aside for reuse is a junkyard. And as far as the variance is concerned, the reason we're not asking for a variance is that we already have the right to operate a junkyard on our property. We don't want to be classified as a junkyard. We only need a variance if we need, if we want to operate that business in a back one-third, the rear third of our property is residential. And since I own a property next door and operate Stevens Marquis out of it, I also deal with that one-third. And we have different rules, our people know what they can do and what they can't do as we drive from one side of our property to the other in residential and commercial, so that's just aside, thank you.
So, now, now, it's basically what you said. So is the appeal just because you don't want to be called junkyard?
Correct, because the junkyard regulations...
That's it, you just don't want to be called a junkyard?
The junkyard regulations are very stringent.
I see, okay.
Once you're classified as a junkyard, you're in the category of the Department of Environmental Services, and you're open to random inspections of your yard, and we think more, more government on, on top of you than is really needed here, because this is a, a distribution business.
Installing a monitoring well might be required, stuff like that. Junkyards are regulated. And I don't think we even are near getting into that type of category. And I'm going to say it again, and so you set the precedence here by agreeing with staff, you are setting that precedence for a dozen other businesses here in Meramec who do the same thing, but on a smaller scale than what we're doing. They're actually generating those parts, we're going out and collecting them, and, and keeping them in dry storage.
Any, any other questions from the board before I open up the public portion?
If, if we allow this to be considered a junkyard, if we don't overturn staff's decision, what kind of requirements is community development going to put on it?
Are you saying if it is in order to be a junkyard?
Correct.
So I, I have the zoning ordinance opened in front of me. And so it's just as the applicant said, when it, when they go before the planning board to get the planning board's site plan approval, provision must be made for monitoring wells of surface and subsurface groundwater at suitable locations for the purpose of testing for contamination by hazardous and toxic, toxic substances.
Okay, Casey, if we do not overturn, if we do not overturn staff, then they would be required to go to planning board for site plan approval?
Well, a business operating needs a site plan approval regardless. They, they need to go through the site plan process for any kind of commercial activity.
So they didn't have site plan approval for this business?
Yes, any business needs site plan approval. But if this business is considered a junkyard, they need to, this ordinance, the junkyard ordinance applies to them.
So do they have site plan approval for this, if it weren't a junkyard?
No, they have not been through the process for any kind of site plan.
So they have to go to, to planning board?
They, they need to go to planning board.
Regardless.
Regardless?
Yes, for, for any kind of business on that property to operate, they need site plan approval.
Weren't you asking if they already received site plan approval for this?
Yes.
No, they have not.
So regardless of, of our determination tonight, they're going to have to go to planning board?
If, I'm assuming if the applicant chooses to operate a business there.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public portion of the, of the petition. Is there anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone that's looking to speak against this petition? All right, if I could just have you guys move over so she can come sit down? Well, she still has to sign in.
I don't believe we have a sign-in sheet set up, do we?
Do we not have the sign-in, okay.
Yeah, so it doesn't matter which microphone she uses.
I apologize, then you can use whichever microphone you prefer, you just make sure that it's on.
Hi, my name is Regina Sullivan, I live at 6 Bernard's Road, which is Society Hill. I'm the president of the Association for Society Hill. So I went on to the board's website, and I read the correspondence that has taken place between the town and the property owners back from December of 2019 through March, a couple of, of correspondences in March, and again in July. So I feel like I'm a little bit up to speed, at least with what you provided on your website. But as in a butter, we certainly are happy with our neighbors, I mean, we have no issue there. But when I read further regarding this appeal of it as a junkyard, I spoke to several of our residents who, and myself included, who feel that it is very loud, and I know they portrayed it as, well, we're just taking parts and we're putting them into storage. That is not the case from our perspective. We hear very loud outdoor work being done on parts, especially metalwork. It sounds like saws are going through metalwork. And there have been nights where at 10:30 at night, they're outside, and they are working on metal, which is very, very loud, if you can imagine saws going through, or however you cut through metal. So they asked me to come to represent them and to just share what we experience as a butters. I just have the concern that the owners have proper permits for the work that they are doing on the property, that's really our bottom line, that after our town's issue and beyond with St. Obane, that we just want to make sure that they are being environmentally responsible. And that if the permits require ground testing, then you know what? I don't want to be back to where we've been and where we continue to be with the groundwater in this town. And so I just appreciate the board's oversight. It's fine that they operate, but we would like them to operate within the boundaries of the law and being responsible for what they're doing on that property. I was learning tonight, we had concerns about fluids from the vehicles. You know, we weren't sure what was coming onto the property, I mean, we see a lot of metal, we see a lot of tires there, we see cars coming in, if they're dismantling the cars, if the fluids were there, the transmission fluids, the oils, you know, whatever is going into the ground, or how it was being properly disposed of. But it sounds, from what I heard tonight, that fluids from cars are not even there. But, again, from our perspective, it is not as simple as them taking in parts and quietly, and the work being indoors, which I believe their attorney portrayed, and then being stored, is really not what we're hearing or experiencing. So thank you for listening, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's looking to speak against this petition? All right, I'll close the public portion. I welcome the petitioners to, you, you can feel free to, to come back if you want to address any of the concerns.
Earlier in the life of the business, Mr. Delisle did salvage parts from cars, but he stopped doing that because it's not as clean or even as lucrative as brokering parts. And so his focus is on this dry storage distribution. He's not sure where the noise comes from. They do have big equipment that picks up pallets that hold boxes full of core car parts that are very heavy, and that might be noisy. Uh, there's also a neighboring business on the, around the backside of Stevens Marquis that has industrial style activity that we're not very well acquainted with, that is maybe noisy. This is the first that we have heard of anyone having a concern on Bernard Street, but the business focus for Mr. Belial now is, um, focused entirely on core parts brokering and distribution.
So. May I? Go for it. So I. New Hampshire RSA's. Two thirty, two thirty-six, colon, one twelve definitions for junkyard. Section C, motor vehicle yards, uh, junkyards, meaning any place, not including the principal place of business of any motor vehicle dealer registered with the director of motor vehicles under RSA two sixty-one, colon, one oh four, and controlled under RSA two thirty-six, colon, one twenty-six, where the following are stored or deposited in the quantity equal in bulk or two or more vehicles. So section two thirty-six, colon, one twelve, section C, paragraph two, used parts of motor vehicles or iron, metal, glass, paper, cordage, or other waste or discarded or second-hand material which has been a part of, has been a part or intended to be a part of any motor vehicle. That's under the definition, that's the New Hampshire definition of a junkyard. From what I can understand from what you've described, that describes your business, second-hand part material. So classifying that area as a junkyard seems applicable based on New Hampshire RSA two thirty-six, one twelve definitions of what a junkyard is. If I'm missing something, please let me know, but that literally it talks about second-hand parts intended to be part of any motor vehicle, which it sounds like that's what you're talking about.
I, I would say then that's what the staff opinion is also.
Right.
And my counter to that is how many, uh, maintenance service bays do you have that would also qualify as that?
And I don't disagree with you with that.
Okay? And I'm saying that this ZBA here is, has, I think has a jurisdiction to interpret the, the statutes and apply them to the town of Merrimack. And you don't want every service bay around here being called a junkyard, but you do want to regulate the excessive use of auto parts and that kind of stuff. So I don't know how you do that, how you get us, grant us relief to operate a business to the level we are, but also regulate and control the junkyards. There seems to be a disparity there. And, and that's why we are appealing the staff's decision.
So I think the definition, if you're going to, if you want to, you want to start breaking down into semantics, where it says C, where it says RSA two thirty-six, one twenty-six, where the following are stored or deposited in a quantity equal to, equal in bulk, as opposed to a shop that might pull out, say fifteen, twenty parts. I mean, now you want to really break down and get into semantics and what is bulk, but they, but you, that's, you know, to say, to say that shop pulls out a, I mean, how many catalyics, how many parts does a shop pull out and put aside to be recycled in a week and a month is compared to how much that you have. You have, you're talking one shop compared to visiting maybe in a, in a course of a month, visiting a hundred shops and picking up all of that. So, you know, without getting in, in, belaboring this till the wee hours in the morning of what is constitutes bulk, based on the RSA, based on what you're discussing, and based on the definition by the state, i- it is a junkyard, based on the definition from the state, unless I'm misreading that RSA.
So it's like New Hampshire Hydraulics are junkyard because they rebuild hydraulics and they take in old hydraulics and rebuild them. So if they're doing that, then they must be a junkyard as well.
I can't speak for New Hampshire Hydraulics, but I mean, you do bring up a point, it does talk about machinery junkyards. So I, I, I understand.
More than I have over there.
I, I think we need to keep focus on the petitioner and not bring in other people. If you want to take those names to the town and say that they're breaking the law, then, but we, we need to deal with what's in front of us, please.
Right.
So there's another, there's another portion of, I can't tell you exactly where it says, it mentions it, but it's, it has to do with the sale of these parts, okay? And, um, I, I, I think my personal opinion and definition of junkyards is those businesses who bring in, store parts and sell them, okay, right off the yard. And I want to emphasize that we're not doing that. There's, there's no deals being made on this site. It's pretty much bring them in and bring them out with no public access. I get it.
Any, uh, any further questions from the board?
I'm, I'm looking a couple of the pictures that were included in our packet, and there are some significantly large dumpsters there, as well as some large trailer storage containers. What's the purpose of those on the site?
The large storage containers?
And, and the large dumpsters. I mean, these dumpsters are much larger than what I would expect you would need for just packaging up some parts and shipping them back out.
Actually, it's more a concern of weight, I think. It's, it's, um, automobile parts that are heavy and, and they're, some, we've had some twenty-yard storage containers there, but I don't think they're there now. Mostly what we have now are, are all, are, are storage containers that you can actually close and lock up.
I'm looking, I'm looking dumpsters.
In those pictures, I don't know how old the pictures are, but they're not there today. And I don't think they've been there since recently after, um, the staff violation notice. But yes, there were open containers, twenty-yard dumpsters with parts inside of them.
So if, if the business, Casey, correct me if I'm wrong, if the business is different and the site is different than what it was when the violation notice was sent, would a reexamination of the site and a review of the actual business change this?
Uh, so there essentially was a reexamination. Uh, in your packet, you will see a letter dated August eighteenth, uh, and that is from Robert Price, the zoning administrator. Uh, and that is him, uh, expl- uh, re-explaining the staff's opinion in response to a letter from the applicant dated August seventeenth, where the applicant breaks down what they're doing on the property.
What's the date of the letter?
Uh, August eighteenth, oh, it says twenty-twenty, which is the typo, it should say twenty-twenty-one.
Says what?
Uh, it, it says August eighteenth, twenty-twenty, but it should say twenty-twenty-one.
I'm looking for that.
It should have been the second document in your packet.
No, it's this one.
If I may, while you're looking, um, I don't think there's any, any contention between, um, our businesses and the staff. Uh, it's a matter of interpretation and literally following the rules. We're, we are not debating whether or not we are storing automobile parts. We're debating how to interpret the regs toward them and whether to classify us as a junkyard. And I think that's what the staff's opinion was when we tried to say this isn't even necessary. I, I put together a letter and tried to convince staff, hey, we're not a junkyard. Here are our operations as we've outlined them to you today, uh, tonight. And, but the staff's opinion back to us was, but by your own admission, you are storing automobile parts. You are a junkyard, period. And that's, that's pretty much staff's opinion, as I, as I interpreted it.
Go ahead.
It looks like staff went back out to the property in March. I don't see that. Although I may be missing something. Oh, no, here we go.
Charles, is there a question?
It seems to me that the question that is before us is one of appeal. And despite the fact that we are here to accommodate citizens and residents of the town, we are here nevertheless to represent the planning and zoning ordinances of the town that have been carefully crafted and voted upon. And we pay very good money for advice from both our legal counsel and our administrators, and they have made a determination. The presenter is asking us to overturn that recommendation. No matter how well-intended we might be, the unintended consequences of entering into that kind of a vague and unknown, um, arena are detrimental to the town as a whole and certainly to this board. We have offered alternative pathways by which they can pursue their business interests in the town. And therefore, I don't believe that we should be overturning our administrative decision and granting them some appeal. They have other avenues which have been explored and discussed here this evening, and I would recommend that they take advantage of those pathways that the town offers.
I think that, um, we, we tend not to, uh, easily grant appeals the way we would a variance for some of those reasons, but I think the biggest reason is the, uh, the ramification of what happens with a variance that affects the petitioner with an appeal that affects the development office. So, um, there have been times where we have granted administrative appeals. It certainly happens if we feel that there is either, um, a strong misinterpretation or if there is, uh, I'd say, an extenuating circumstance, as opposed to a variance where we would look at it as, um, strict enforcement of the ordinance and how that impacts the particular petitioner. But I think even, even to Patrick's point earlier, he, he read the RSA out and it definitely states, um, uh, second-hand automotive parts, um, are qual- uh, actually, what do you?
Actually, and, and I, I missed this. So in, uh, RSA two thirty-six, colon, one twelve definitions of junkyard, section one, paragraph eight, automotive recycling yards, meaning a motor vehicle junkyard, as identified in a sub-paragraph C, which I read earlier, the primary purpose of which is to salvage multiple motor vehicle parts and materials for recycling and reuse. I understand where you're coming from, but it, based on the state RSA, it's, it's a junkyard. I, I mean, that's, it, it talks about in two places where the, uh, motor, motor parts, and I understand exactly what you're saying as well, and I understand that there could be other com- or companies that could be quote-unquote considered junkyards for machinery parts and stuff like that, but based on the RSA, um, I gotta be honest, it's, it's, I'm reading it right out of the state book, so, um, I don't, you know, I don't see any reason to overturn the appeal. That's my take on it.
All right. Any further questions or discussion before? All right. Is anyone looking to make a motion?
Motion to deny Building Properties LLC petitioner-owner appeal of administrative decision determining that the current use of the property is a junkyard per the town zoning ordinance and NH RSA two thirty-six, colon, one twelve. The parcel is located at seven nineteen Daniel Webster Highway in the C-two general commercial R for residential and planned residential districts, tax map seventy, lot zero five two, case number ZBA twenty-twenty-one dash zero seven.
Okay, so a motion made by Patrick, seconded by Rod. Do you want to add a, uh?
There is no board recommendations. Uh, there's nothing to add at this time. I do hope that they file for variance because I think they have grounds for it, but, um, I just can't over, I can't agree to overturn the appeal at this time.
All right. All in favor of denial of the appeal?
Aye.
Aye. That's five zero zero.
Thanks very much for your time. This is actually helpful.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Whose laptop is that?
That's the town's.
Oh, okay. Next petition, uh, Carrie Valzone, petitioner-owner, variance under section two-point-oh-two, point-one, point-A, point-three-E of the zoning ordinance to permit an unpermitted existing accessory dwelling unit, uh, to remain as, uh, one thousand twenty square feet, whereas one thousand square feet is allowed, and obtain necessary permits. And the parcel is located at Nine Profile Drive in the R-one residential by soils district, tax map six B, lot one seventy-six, case ZBA twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-nine.
Hi.
Hello.
Carrie Valzone, uh, petitioner and owner at Nine Profile Drive. Um, would you like me to give a little bit of background?
I'm sure, yeah, please, uh, please tell us about this and then we can go into the,
Questions, okay.
The five points.
So my husband and I purchased this house about four years ago. It had an existing addition on the side of the house, which my mother and stepfather moved in to that portion of the house with us and my two children. And then the, and as I understand it, that was a permitted addition, um, because I, I think it was Casey or Robert that I spoke to and they looked it up and it was, um, it was a permitted addition. And then we added on a bedroom to the back of that. And within that existing addition, there was a bathroom and, you know, an entrance to go from our house to that side of the house. Um, and there was some plumbing, so, you know, we could put in a sink or, um, anything like that. So that was it. And then, you know, they lived there, everything is fine. And then I, I go to refinance and, um, last year I got the appraisal done with no problem at all, refinanced. This year I went to do the same thing to get an even lower interest rate through my refinance. And this time the appraiser brought to my attention that this looks like an ADU or it doesn't appear that you have an approval for this ADU. And so I went through the process of, um, getting that approval and we realized that we were twenty square feet over. So we're requesting a variance for, in order to permit an existing ADU to remain in place, having a total of one thousand and twenty square feet, whereas a maximum of one thousand square feet is required. I hope that made sense.
It does, thank you.
Okay, good.
All right, so if you could, just please step through each of the variance criteria.
Sure.
And if you could just stop at the end of each bullet, just in case we have questions.
Okay. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the additional twenty square feet has no impact on visual character of the neighborhood. The structure is already existing, uh, from the prior owners and we simply added to the back of it. Um, and the use will remain the same as residential use.
All right, any questions?
No.
All right.
Okay. Uh, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the prior owners initially added the space with the town's approval. Um, we then added to the space as well with the town's approval. Um, and now it is, it's the combined unit that we wish to seek the proper ADU approval for.
I, I guess I have a question, just curious.
Yeah.
So this was an ADU before you moved into the house?
Um, I don't know. I don't believe it was. It was an addition that was built on.
There was no kitchen.
No, there was no kitchen. There was a bathroom.
Okay, all right, oh, I see, so.
Yeah.
It wasn't an ADU.
I guess it, yeah.
Or is this, are we approving an ADU when we say yes or no to this?
Yeah, approving the variance would then essentially consider it an ADU.
So it has a separate entrance and all of that?
In the back, yes. There's no front entrance, yeah.
And was that bedroom you added on approved by the town and all that, the building permit?
Yes, yep.
Is there a kitchen now?
There is now, yeah. So since then, we have, the plumbing, I believe the gas company did come in, but the plumbing and everything already existed, it just wasn't a, they didn't have.
So it wasn't a separate apartment?
No, it wasn't.
You turned it into a separate apartment?
Yes.
During your timeframe?
Yes.
So are we approving?
Yes.
A new ADU?
Yes.
Or we approving an existing ADU with an extra 20 feet?
I believe she was looking for an ADU, but because the dimensions happen to be 20 square feet larger, it couldn't automatically be approved by the development office. It has to come before us.
Otherwise, it would have been approved through committee.
Okay, okay. When I read this, I thought we were approving the extra 20 feet.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just want to add some clarity that if this variance is granted, it would still need to go through our internal approval process to actually approve the ADU. This is just a variance for staff to approve an ADU that's 20 square feet too big.
Yeah, as I understand it, there will be a next step.
Just to clarify and be technical about it.
So we're not approving the ADU? We're just approving a variance to allow it to be?
It would, if the, if this variance is approved, the applicant would still need to go through our internal process. And she did apply for that administrative approval, but we weren't able to process it because we recognized that it was 20 square feet too big, which is why she needs a variance from that zoning ordinance.
So we're approving 20 square feet or?
Right. We're really not related to the ADU. We're approving the extra 20 feet. And then, planning board would approve the ADU?
Yeah, not planning board, this doesn't need a planning board approval because it's an attached ADU. It will be internal to our department, administratively.
Please continue.
Okay. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because I feel it would just bring full property disclosure to all the town departments to assess the value and accurate taxation of the property, et cetera.
Any questions? All right, please continue.
Granting the variance would not diminish the values of surrounding properties because there are no changes to the existing property. Therefore, there would be no negative impact to any of the abutters and all those involved.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, if you want, you can just read through the whole unnecessary hardship piece.
Okay. So this decision would likely go unnoticed by the public as the space remains unchanged and still, usage is still residential. The proposed use is reasonable because the initial addition by the prior owners was within these limits and the space that we added were within these limits. And now it is the combined space that is over by the 20 square feet. And a disapproval of the variance would essentially just cause unnecessary construction to the existing space to remove the 20 square feet, which would have really no benefit to anybody.
Absolutely. It makes total sense. Because you were building out the property before you had the ADU, you couldn't have really known all of those things.
Yeah, exactly.
So it makes sense, and I don't think anyone would have stopped you from building an addition on your house.
Yeah. Yeah, this has, this has all been very knowledgeable for me, so I wasn't aware of any of it. But I understand now and we will, the next step, from what I understand, is to go and get the permits for the kitchen and all that, from what I understand.
Absolutely, yeah. So it looks like the next steps here are obtain administrative approval for the ADU and then obtain any type of required permitting from the building and fire departments.
Yes.
So it seems very cut and dry. I guess before we open to the public, does anyone have any questions? All right. So I'll go ahead and open this up to the public. Is there anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone looking to speak against this petition? All right, closing the public. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve Carrie Falzone, petitioner owner, variance under section 2.02.1A.3. E of the zoning ordinance to permit an unpermitted existing accessory dwelling unit remain as 1,020 square feet, whereas 1,000 square feet is allowed and obtain necessary permits. The parcel is located at Nine Profile Drive in the R1 residential by soils district, tax map lot 6B, or tax map 6B lot 176, case number ZBA 2021-29. With board approval, the petitioner shall obtain administrative approval for the accessory dwelling unit from the community development department and to, the petitioner shall obtain any required permitting from the building and fire department.
All right, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Rod. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So five zero zero. You're all set with us?
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome. And good luck.
Thank you.
So for the next petition, Patrick will be excusing himself. So Charles, if I could have you sit in as a voting member for item number six, and then afterwards, Patrick will rejoin us. So for six, Mark Borbo, petitioner owner, variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of an eight, of a garage eight feet from the side property line, whereas 15 feet is required, and 39 feet from the rear, whereas 40 feet is required. Parcel is located at 30 Joppa Road in the R4 residential in Aquifer districts, tax map 5C, 232, case ZBA 2021-31.
Hi.
Hello.
I am actually Kathy Borbo, his wife. He was unable to come tonight, so you're stuck with me. Yes, as you just read, we are looking to add on a garage that is 24 by 30, and it will encroach eight feet on our 15-foot offset and then 39 on the 40.
I feel like because of the way our, our town is devised, there's just so many people that need to come in for variances for garages, just.
I know.
We have these very strict ordinances and yet so few properties in Merrimack even fit. So we totally understand. If you want to, actually, since we were very familiar with these types of cases, if you want to go ahead and just read through each of the bullets, we'll.
Okay.
And just stop at the end, if you could, so we can ask questions if we have any?
Sure. In order to permit the construction of a proposed 24 by 30 garage with a side setback of eight feet, where 15 is required, and with a rear setback of 39, where 40 is required.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant the.
The, okay.
The variance criteria.
Gotcha.
So the first one being granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because?
The proposed garage addition is an improvement to an existing substandard lot created in the mid 1960s, adding the garage is a consistent, is consistent with surrounding properties in the area and therefore would not be contrary to the public interest.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, number two.
The spirit of the ordinance is to provide reasonable yard setbacks to abutting properties. The direct abutter to the proposed addition currently has an existing nonconforming garage, which is, which also encroaches a side setback. These complementary garage uses would not necessitate the full yard setback and therefore the spirit is observed.
And I think that also just kind of goes back to the fact that we see so many of these cases, just because of the way the properties are here in Merrimack.
And we actually have spoken with them quite a few times, and they're totally like, you're fine, you know, we have no problem with it. They were willing to, matter of fact, he came over the other day and was willing to write something up and send it in with me. And, you know, I explained that he had already gotten the letter to attend if he needed to, and he was totally fine with it, so.
I gotta say, the only time I think I've ever seen us really shoot down a garage in the, I think the, maybe 10 years I've been on the board, was probably when somebody wanted a second garage. They had a two-car garage attached house, and they wanted a three-car garage detached, like, straight in the corner of a property, and we're like, no, no, you can't do that.
Too many.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if you want to go ahead with number three?
Okay. The property, granting the variance would do substantial justice because the property is currently developed and based on the house and driveway position as well as the property topography, top?
Topography.
Oh, my gosh, thank you. There is no way to accommodate a garage on site without the variance. This would provide substantial justice to the applicant in allowing improvement to their property with an addition that is consistent and complementary to the existing surrounding neighborhood.
All right, any questions? Please continue.
And four, the proposed addition would enhance the existing home, improving the property and adding value. This added value would have no adverse effect on surrounding properties.
All right. And if you want to go ahead and read the unnecessary hardship piece?
Sure. The existing property is an existing substandard lot created in the mid 1960s. The existing home is currently constructed on site and is positioned as such to not reasonably allow the addition of a garage on the property. The house and driveway location and existing site topography are special conditions of this property, which require the variance to reasonably allow expansion of the house to accommodate a garage.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And so what I'd like to do now is just open it to the public.
Sure.
Is there anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone looking to speak against this petition? Now I can say I've done my due diligence.
[laughing].
Closing the, the public portion. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that Mr. and Mrs. Mark Borbo, petitioner owner, that we grant them the variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a garage eight feet from the side property line, whereas 15 feet is required, 39 feet from the real property, rear property line, whereas 40 feet is required. The parcel is located at 30 Joppa Road, the R4 residential, Aquifer district, map 5C/232, case number ZBA 2021-31.
All right, do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, so motion made by Rod, seconded by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, five zero zero. So there is a 30-day appeal window where someone could say, no, I don't want you to build that garage, just so you're aware.
Okay.
But other than that, you're good to go.
Awesome, thank you so much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Item seven, Innovation Acquisition LLC petitioner and Solon Properties LLC, and Innovation Acquisition LLC have requested a continuance to the September 29th meeting. So we have to vote on that, right?
Yes, you do need to vote, but before you do that, for the purpose of the minutes, can you state that Patrick is now a voting member?
Yes, thank you. And now that, Charles, now that Patrick is back, he is now returning as a voting member for the board. So who would like to read in?
What's the date we're?
I'm sorry?
What's the date we're continuing to?
September 29th.
Make a motion to continue Innovation Acquisition LLC petitioner and Solon Properties LLC and Innovation Acquisition LLC owners, variance under section 2.02.4. B of the zoning ordinance to permit multifamily residential use in the industrial district. The parcel is located at 1 Innovation Way in the I1 industrial and Aquifer Conservation, or Aquifer districts, tax map 2D, lot 041-15, case number ZBA 2021-32, with the continuation being for the September 29th, 2021 meeting.
No further notice?
Nope, there's no requirement.
With no further abuter notice.
All right, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Rod. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero zero. And now on to item?
Relative to this continuance, this is a substantial residential development, the old Brookstone National Headquarters. And I drove around the neighborhood a fair amount yesterday, and if you haven't, I'd recommend you do it because you get a understanding of the diverse development there, residential apartments, condominiums, other office spaces, some industrial buildings there too, and a topography that is very, like.
A photography that's very wavy and well-treed, so that there is a lot of buffer between most of the properties. Helps you get an understanding as to how this development is not going to be a nuisance to abutters or someone two or three sites away. It's a very interesting site and building, and they have huge parking, you know, 200, 300 parking spaces.
That's pretty big.
Yeah.
So, I will take a look at it.
All right, so moving on to item number eight. Patricia, I'm sorry, I really do not want to butcher this last name.
Pansyaco.
Pansyaco, thank you. Esquire petitioner, and Lori F. and Rod R. Ruland trustees of the Lori F. Ruland Revocable Trust, variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a house 13.6 feet from the side property, whereas 15 feet is required. The parcel is located at 312 Babusak Lake Road in the R2 residential district, tax map 6A-2, lot 159, case ZBA 2021-33.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, my name is Patricia Pansyaco. I'm here with Rod Ruland, my client, and we're here to present a request for a variance. Before we get started, I did have a question whether or not the board had received the letters from the abutters. Okay, I brought them.
Unfortunately, we can't take the.
Well, can I read them into the record?
You certainly can, yes.
And they should be in the packets.
Oh.
As well. Yep, yeah, we did receive those. So there's three of them, right? I just want to make sure they're in the record.
Did we swear you in by chance?
I don't think you did.
She came after that.
Oh, okay. If you could, please just raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay. So again, I'm here on behalf of Lori and Rod Ruland, the trustees of the Lori and Rod Ruland Revocable Trust. The Rulands own the property known as six, is map 6A2, lot 159. The property is the result of a recent voluntary merger of 6A, lot 156 and 159. It's a nonconforming lot and has frontage on Babusak Lake. It's located in the R2 zone and the Shoreland Protection District. The property has 2.05 acres and has no legal frontage, but is accessed over a private road shared with the neighbor by the name of Guder Lane, which appears on the town's GIS map. And that road extends out to Babusak Lake Road. The property currently includes, and if you look at the existing conditions map that was in the package, there's an existing garage that was built in 1988 and a renovated seasonal dwelling that dates back to about 1969. The dwelling unit was made year-round, it's had a number of. The dwelling unit was made year-round, it's had a number of additions, it's pretty old and it had about 3,000 square feet and allotted decks that faced the lake. My clients are hoping to raise the existing dwelling unit, reduce the size of the deck facing the lake and replace it with a new home of approximately the same size. If you look at the existing conditions plan, you'll see that the side facing the lake is presently 46.8 feet from the lake and while we meet the rear setback requirement, we are hoping to pull that back to 47.1 feet and reduce the area covered by the deck. The other setback shortcoming is the side setback. As a non-conforming lot, Section 3.05 requires 15-foot side setback and we're requesting that we be allowed to maintain the existing 13.6 feet from the side lot line, I think it's 13 feet 6 inches. Okay. So, on that side, the dwelling would just be 13.6 from the outside property line and the reason we're asking for that, we'll go into when we get into the criteria. But the biggest issue here is my clients are looking to minimize the disturbance of this site to the greatest extent possible given its location fronting on the lake and to honor the protections of the Shoreland Protection Act which limit disturbances substantially within the first 50 feet but just as much as to woodland and vegetation in the second 150 feet as you go in from the high watermark of the water. So, with that said, I can take you through the five points and the first one being not contrary to the public interest. Under the law, we must enforce the law, but in New Hampshire, a statute is, controls law as long as the local ordinance is, the local ordinance can be more strict than the statute, but in this case, if we were to adhere to the 15 feet on the side, it may very well result in further disturbance and what we're looking to do here, because the home has been here for so long, is to not threaten any of the trees or the mature vegetation on the site or disturb the roots. So, in a context like this and working in the Shoreland Protection Zone, every inch counts. And for that reason, they would like to maintain the side setback at its existing point for that particular reason. The other reason is they're also looking to not alter the grading of the site and if we were to try to shift the house out of that setback, we may very well change the topography in other areas to control the stormwater. And I know stormwater is, is a big and important issue, especially now you have MS4. It's important that we maintain what's working and on this site, as it presently stands, it is working. Beyond the house, there's a boat ramp and the grading there, there's areas that are somewhat steep and they would like to leave those alone. So, it's not to cause any disturbance or run off into the lake. The spirit of the ordinance is observed. My clients have taken affirmative action by merging the two former lots to try to bring the lots into conformity. They are pulling the structure back from the lake, they're reducing the size of the decks facing the lakes and they're not increasing the non-conformities here on this site at all. Plus, I would argue that RSA 67419, which I put right into the application at the top, protects what they have. So, in this case, that's all they're looking to do is protect what they already have on the side lot line. Granting the variance would be substantially just, which requires the loss to the applicant be less than the gain to the public. The public gains nothing by strict enforcement of the 15-foot side setback. And the abutters on both sides have stepped up and said, we're just fine with this. There's been no objection from any of them. So, we do think it would be substantially just to allow the side setback that exists to be maintained. Granting the variance would not diminish the surrounding property values. A brand-new home in place of a renovated seasonal home is far more valuable in this location, it will not diminish values and you can bet your bottom dollar that the abutters would not be supporting this renovation had there been any diminution in value. And they're in support of this request being granted. As to hardship, the special conditions on this particular site are its location. It has long frontage on the lake and the lake is a source of concern for many people as well as the water quality. The Shoreland Protection Act imposes very strict limitations on disturbance the closer you get to the lake. But in, as I mentioned earlier, within the 150 woodland buffer that is shown on the plan, there and it's, it restricts what you can cut down and you cannot alter the existing vegetation any more than, than is absolutely necessary. So, for that reason, as I said earlier, every inch counts to be able to preserve what we have. While the ordinance attempts, and I'm sure this is the purpose, to amortize non-conformities, RSA is at odds with that ordinance under Section 305 because that statute, which is controlling, protects what we have. And in this case, when you have environmental resources like the lake and the shoreline at stake, the ordinance must yield, in our opinion, because the natural resources are a whole lot more important than 18 inches on a side setback to which no one has objected. We definitely will limit any changes to the site and to the topography and the vegetation. We believe it's a right to leave the home at the existing side setback of 13 and 1/2 feet and we think the request is reasonable as is the use as a single-family home which is permitted under the ordinance. And that's all I have unless you have questions for myself or my client.
So, I was just, just to be clear, the, the purpose behind the variance is to not impact the vegetation on the property?
Yes, to the greatest extent possible.
Okay.
Yes.
Really fundamentally, I don't want to cut down the big trees that are around the house, so I want to minimize any disruption and be within the confines of what we have now.
That's right.
Oh, absolutely.
And we never know where the roots are until you actually start digging a hole, so...
That's true.
That is very important.
All right, any questions from the board?
Casey, does this have to go to the planning board if we approve it for site approval?
This variance is not, does not have to go to the planning board.
Oh, I, yes, thank you for reminding me.
Yes.
For a moment, I forgot.
If we grant the variance, does he have, because he's raising and rebuilding, does he have to go to the planning board for site approval?
It's not site plan approval, but this lot does not have frontage on a class-five road or better, so there is a pit stop they need to make at the planning.
You will have to go to the planning board?
Yep.
Yes.
Would you like to make a motion?
Well, we, we do have to open the public first, technically. All right. So, I'll open the public portion. Is there anyone in this empty room who'd like to speak either in favor or against this petition? I'll take that as a no. I'll go ahead and close that. All right, go for it, Rod.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we grant Patricia M. Pansyaco, Esquire, and Lori F. Rod R. Ruland, trustees of Lori F. Ruland Revocable Trust, variance under Section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a house 13.6 feet from the side property line whereas 15 is required. The parcel is located at 312 Babusick Lake Road in the R2 Residential District, tax map 6A-2, lot 159, case number ZBA 2021-33, with the conditions that the petitioner shall obtain approval for issuance of a building permit on a lot without frontage on a class-five or better roadway per the requirements of RSA 674:41. Recommendation from the planning board, permit approval from the town council.
Second. All right, motion made by Rod, seconded by Patrick, all in favor?
Aye.
5-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and as I think I told the previous petitioner, there's a 30-day appeal window where somebody could appeal this. It doesn't really happen that often, but we do have to let you know.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Thank you and good luck.
Motion to approve the minutes of Wednesday, July 28th, 2021?
All right, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Rod, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain, so 4-0-1?
Or 4 is, yeah, 4-0-1.
Yeah, 4-0-1.
All right. Although you jumped it, we, we still have discussion of possible action regarding other items of concern.
You're killing me.
Do we have anything?
Casey, we got anything?
Nope, we have nothing.
Who wants to do the final one?
What?
It's always one.
Motion, adjourned.
No, Ben just did it. I'll second.
Motion by Ben, seconded by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0-0. Good night, everybody.
Casey?